Is this something that they've never had that all of a sudden they gotta have?
Going to call us, meeting the order of our monthly, monthly meeting here at six o'clock. Appreciate everyone being here. Of course, it's our work session and we'll go ahead and has everyone read the, looked over the? I'm a lost reward. I hadn't, I've been talking to Bogo Painer for like fifteen minutes, so he's got me all messed up here. And y'all know Bozo, I guess, but I love him to death, you know? But we, everybody looked at the minutes and changes or anything?
I had to make a change.
I was gonna ask you something about it, well, go.
I'd like to do a number twelve just for discussion of when we get completed with the courthouse.
Okay, we'll add that, we'll do that, right? Actually, we'll do that when we do the report, when he comes up and does the breakdown of it. Anything else? Personnel status, y'all wanna hook the personnel report? Pretty cut and dry on that.
As it's been in a long time.
I know, I know, really, we hadn't had any changes, you know, we had one new employee that started today down at the senior building. Penny that used to work for the service down there. She's, she's gonna be a good, good addition down there and she's really good and, well, she started Monday, but she came in today, so that's one good thing, so. All right, let's move on down. Board appointments and proclamations. Four A, this is our proclamation for Respectful Law. Day is joint proclamation between the city of Trenton and Dade County. And this is presented by the Dade Optimus Club. This is something we've done for years, ever since I've been commissioner, I think. It's been going on for many, many years and special day. Everybody fine with that?
They will be having that annual thing, what day is it?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth? That they always do at the courthouse down here honoring.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. And it all ties into this, we'll read this proclamation that day. Then four B, this is our foster care month. This is another proclamation we've been doing for many years and everybody fine with that?
Yes.
Four C, this is National Day of Prayer. It's our proclamation and this is pertaining to May, May the second, twenty twenty-four, which is today. And so, everybody fine with that? All right, move down to four D. This is a proclamation, National Travel and Tourism Week, May of twenty-four. Now, this is not, this is probably what, the second year we've done that, Don, or is it?
I think it is the second.
Second year. I know last year we had done that, so that's something fairly new. Everybody fine with that? And four E, this is our Armed Forces Day, Saturday, May the eighteenth. And we've been, we've been doing this ever since I can ever remember here, so that's, everybody fine with that? Are y'all gonna, you gonna have an event here or down on that day?
I believe, no, we got a meeting on Saturday, so.
So you'll, you'll put that in the paper, everybody, okay, and on our website. Okay, that's good, all right.
Move down to number five here. Any splosh capital equipment? We do have some requests tonight. Tommy Bradford, yeah, Tommy, come up. He's the first one on the roster here. And they're asking us for a Taser X twenty-six P from Axon Enterprise Incorporated. Tommy, I want you to explain what that is to us.
Yeah, so the taser is just an extra tool that the officers carry to consider it a less lethal tool. I guess most of y'all probably know what it is. So the ones that we have have went out of warranty and we have some that's down. So it's kinda price-wise on it, it's not worth trying to get them fixed because they, they want you to buy new, so they make it difficult for you to. So we figured, I talked to Don and we talked about just doing maybe four a year and because of the price of them. I've got two prices. One is with a extended four-year warranty. And then the other one is just with the basic one-year warranty. And then, of course, they make you buy a battery with it and then the holster that comes with it. So the total with the warranty is, uh, okay, the total with the warranty is eight thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents for four. And without the warranty, it is six thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty cents.
Now, that's for, how many did you say for four?
Just four, yeah, just four, which is kinda ridiculous, but they're the only company out there, so I guess they get to say what.
How long was the warranty?
Uh, the four years.
Four years?
Yes.
So it's a total of five. There's one automatic year.
Well, it's got a year warranty on it anyway.
Yeah, well, yeah, the total, it'll be a total of five year, but one year comes with it, so.
And there's no, no comparative price that you, that you could get on, I mean, as far as a bid.
There's nobody else that makes them, so, I mean, they just, I think the last time we ordered them, they were around nine hundred, so probably right at a thousand dollars apiece. They're thirteen ninety-six apiece without the.
Well, if you had very much trouble, I mean, is it worth, do you think it's worth the warranty? We're gonna listen to you on that, I mean.
We have had to send a lot back. We're just now starting to run in with, to issues with some. So, I mean, it's kinda one of those that, if we don't get it, we may need it, if we.
Yeah, you don't know, it's a hit and miss.
So it looks like there may be, what did we say, about four hundred dollars a?
What do you think, Mr. Hartline?
I'm good with it.
It's allowed?
Include the warranty, yeah.
So that's just the one that has like the, you just go zzz? It's not the one that?
No, it shoots the bars out, yeah.
Okay, so after it shoots, you could fix it and?
Yeah, we have extra cartridges, which we buy those through our general.
So you're, this is mainly the main part?
It's just the main part, yeah. So yes, our, the one that we buy are just putting a new cartridge on it and it's good to go. It's not like the public model. You get one shot. It's made to throw down and run. Eight hundred dollars, but.
I'm good with it.
All right, send it to the end of there. Thank you, Tommy. And that is with the warranty. Go with it, okay. B, five B, this is the Dade County Fire Department. Who's representing y'all?
Kaiser.
Kaiser, okay.
We're asking y'all to, use splosh to buy two fill stations, one for station one and one for station four, for air bottles, for breathing apparatus. Everything we've got, the one at station four right now is, it's only a three thousand pound. Our bottles are forty-five hundred. So we're gonna have to completely replace the compressor and, and the fill stations. You can't fill one bottle and we can't fill them all the way up, but we've got to quotes from Ten Eight Fire and Safety, which is a company that represents, that we, we do a lot of business with. And the, the systems are called Arctic Air Systems and they're, it'd be completely replaced. It'd be a new compressor. Cascade bottles, which will be five thousand pound bottles instead of the three thousand that we've got down there now. All the fittings, everything installed. It's got a five-year extended warranty or a thousand hours on the compressor. So if anything happens, it'll be covered. We're asking for, let's see, station four would be, for splosh, would be fifty-one, eight eighty-six, fifty-five. And that'll completely cover that station there. Station one, we're asking for a.
Yeah, that was station four you're talking?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it was fifty-one, eight eighty-six, fifty-five, yeah.
I think y'all got that.
I'm looking at, yeah, we got it.
Same thing at station one. We're gonna replace that compressor, all new cascade bottles, cause they're out of date. The compressor we've got now is getting some age on it and we're having to spend quite a bit to keep it, keep it going. It's expensive to replace all the electronic parts, so it'll be sixty thousand, thirteen ninety-seven. That'll be divided between the county and the city. The city will pay half and the county will pay half out of splosh for that. Give you a little bit of a update. We're continually working at station four, getting it, getting it ready and trying to get all of our bathrooms and bedrooms and stuff built back in. And we're well on the way. We worked yesterday on it and.
And when they say work, I'm gonna vouch for them. They mean cutting up concrete floors, tearing walls down, plumbing and electrical and.
Just luckily, we got a lot of people.
Yeah, y'all been doing some real, some real work.
We'll get it done and we'll have an open house, I hope, so. But that's what we're asking for, for, out of the splosh. Like I say, the city will pay half of the Trenton, station one and the station four will be out of their splosh.
So about eighty-two thousand, ninety-three thousand, almost eighty-three thousand between both of them. And the city paid their share, thirty percent, thirty. Mr. Hartline, you got questions?
How many bottles can you fill at a time?
Well, I'm gonna tell you what they tell us. You can fill probably twenty-five or thirty bottles, but you gotta know how to do it. There's a certain way to do it. Yeah, fill two at a time.
How often do you have to fill the bottles?
How often? Anytime we have a fire or anytime we have training. Yeah, I mean, we, we've had to come back to the station and fill it, it's station one because we can't fill them at four if we have a fire in there. We've had to send people back to give them filled because you can't, you only got like four or five spare bottles on the engine, so.
Any more questions?
I'm, yeah, going around and I'm still working on it.
Lamar?
I noticed that station four's only got a seven and a half horsepower and station one's got a ten. Why, why the?
Yes, sir. I don't know if they told to put the horsepower on these or not.
One says triple fill, the station one's a triple fill, so that may be. But I don't know why the, well, God is, cause it's filling three at once instead of two.
Did you answer his question?
He's trying, he's looking.
A what horsepower?
No, he's asking why that, why station four has a, has a ten horsepower, six thousand and, and station, I mean, station one and station four has a seven and a half. And both of them fill four bottles for six thousand PSI. You know, I mean, it don't, it don't look like it might have been a misprint or something.
Station four will fill two bottles at a time. Station one will fill three bottles at a time, that's why. We did that, those train centers, that, your, a couple of times, and when they had to look at them out and other departments come back, we can fill more bottles.
You can fill that, yeah.
We do, we do a lot of burdens with other stations when they need for the firefighters and you go through quite a few bottles, so you need a bigger, bigger machine to keep the bottles filled.
And what's, how, what stations, are they all similar with how many they have? Like all the stations?
I think most of the stations have compressors. I don't really know how much, what they have, to be honest with you, but it's no, what we have.
Well, I'm good with it. I just didn't know, I just had that question about the difference.
That's the reason, you need a bigger one here because we do, like I say, we have a training center and we do a lot of training with the, not just the people in this county, but outside the county. And you can fill more bottles with it quicker, so.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my only concern would be if anybody else needs this and if it would be a better deal or more than, you know, if somebody needs it, but. That would, that would be my only concern.
I, I think all, most of the stations can fill, most of them, I know south they can. I'm sure Westboro can fill forty-five hundred pound bottles. You just gotta have to have that size compressor to, to fill these bottles. You can't, you know, a smaller compressor won't fill them. We used to be twenty-two sixteen. Now all bottles are forty-five hundred, so.
You fine with it?
On this invoice, Jerry, they say installations fifteen hundred, but down in the total, it says the freight is fifteen hundred or fifteen fifty on each one of them. Is that two different fifteen fifties?
Yeah, that's the, that's the installation and the wiring and putting them in and all that.
Well, they're calling it freight in one place and my question was gonna be, are they gonna be dropped, something they drop ship? And why would, you know, they're gonna be fifteen hundred dollars for one load of stuff, you know? Or three thousand for?
They won't do them, they'll do them separately because it's a pretty good size.
So it is, it is there hooking everything up then, not freight. I mean, they're showing, like I say, they're showing it freight.
That's installation, that's all, the wiring or whatever we need and any, and the hoses, the high-pressure hoses, we have to help. And then you have to have all your hoses hooked to each bottle that goes into your regulator and regulates how much pressure you're putting, putting in the air tanks.
Where, where do you see that, Robert?
On the invoice, it said, the very last line says installation fifteen hundred. You go down to the total under the bottom, it calls it freight fifteen, or fifteen fifty. And so I was wondering, was it, they're two fifteen fifties or?
Yeah, I bet it's combined, cause I know they probably have to charge for it to get there, right?
Yeah, it has to be shipped.
Yeah, I mean, it's not gonna be free, so.
I mean, it's not something.
Well, the question again was, was it something drop ship and y'all take it over from there? Or did they have to take it to Trenton and then take one down there?
And then they have to.
But if they've gotta hook it up, I understand it, but it just looked like.
The, the big fifty-five hundred, six thousand pound, big bottles all have to be strapped to the wall and all that and that's all, that's all included. They do all that.
Are you fine with it?
Yeah.
Put that on the concern again, okay.
Is this, oh, wait a second, is this the, when it says fi, half from the city?
Yes, sir.
Half from the county, but it's all splosh?
Yes, sir.
So the city's using part of their splosh?
Yes, sir. Yeah, they're using part of their splosh and part of the county.
For both, both, uh, four and one?
No, just, just one.
Just one, the station one?
Just one for station one because that is city, county, so. And then another will be station four's block.
I think Phillip had a question.
Yeah, I got a few more. How long does it take to fill a bottle?
A couple of minutes. Depends, like, what happens is they get hot. You gotta be real careful when you fill them. If you're on fire, you just fill them. I mean, that's, you know, it's, you gotta get them filled so they get warm. But if you're just normally filling them up, we take time and don't, don't overheat them. Those bottles have to be checked every five years, so, and the life of them's. Yeah, yeah, if there's some air in them, it doesn't take quite long. I can fill one in probably a couple of minutes, but it gets pretty warm.
Well, my question then would be, say, North Dade Fire Department, y'all have a fire down, down there and y'all need to refill bottles. Y'all also drove the trucks, so would y'all be bringing the trucks back through to the, if we can't even borrow to fill fuel up on, in the trucks? So if so, would it be better just to have the one at this fire hall and as you pass through, fill them up down here? Still get them up there?
Yeah, we, we use fuel cars now because we don't wanna have to drive all the way down here. Yeah, truck maintenance is the main thing we do and most, a lot of the maintenance we've been doing, so, and the county's been real good to help us out. We've got them all just about back up to where they need to be. We're, got a couple of little things we're still working on, but we'll get it done.
Is there a legal concern?
Any more questions?
I'm good with it.
All right, all right, dude.
I think we're work, we'll work it out. The county has to own, we can't split, we can't split the machines, so the county needs to own it one hundred percent.
Yeah, if, we're using county splosh.
Capitalized property.
And so we gotta work.
But we, we can figure out something other in the future that they buy that's more city just pays for. I mean, I, I don't really know how.
I'll restate my, I'll, I'll take my statement back then. If we're gonna have to pay four for both of them, I'm good with one, but not both.
Does the city wanna buy one of the compressors?
I hadn't thought about that, though. We did have to have it as a whole unit.
Even the bottles, it's, it's just the compressor, though. It's not bottles, right?
It's compressor in the, the fill, the bottles, the big bottles. You have your compressor in one room, you have your five big bottles and all the air. And you got a fill station, but you fill them and then close one and blows up. It's a safety thing.
Well, maybe we could buy the unit, figure out and break it out, what the unit costs. If it costs twenty-eight, thirty thousand dollars for a unit and then the bottles, I don't know how, how expensive the bottles are. I don't think it'd be that much, but that way.
It tells here the compressor's twenty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars. So we could purchase the compressor and the city can purchase the bottles. We could split it up that way.
Right.
So you aren't with it if we do, if we do it that way, with them, as long as the city pays their share, right?
Yeah, I mean, that'd be it.
Yes, yeah, if we split it up like that, I'm good with it.
Okay, well, we'll just have to make it work.
Okay.
Okay, all right, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Jerry. All right. Number six, any ARPA on there? There's another thing showing here, sir. I don't think so, no, okay. All right, Mr. Cole Atkins, you're, you're up. You have the floor. And during this time, we'll also discuss, Mr. Hartline, they're asking at the end, they will talk a little bit about it.
Evening, everybody. We'll start with our budget status. Door Hardware is currently being processed Robinson Door out of Chattanooga. Our current contingency is ninety thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. On the construction schedule, drywall on the second floor's been hung. It's currently being finished. All of our remanufactured ceiling tiles have been installed, or have been installed and our crown molding is on site. Trim carton tree should resume Monday morning. We pulled all of our data cabling. As for the connections in the basement, I'm not sure, cause I forgot my keys and I wasn't able to get in the building this evening. We're cleaning the return air ducts on Monday, just as a precaution for all the construction dust. We don't wanna suck those up into the unit. They should be here Monday or Tuesday and then we're gonna fire up the air conditioner hopefully sometime next week. Our LVT ceramic tile and acoustical ceiling are on order. And those are all readily available options, so that shouldn't, shouldn't take long to ship. Open items, after conversations with Mr. Bruce Case, we're pricing two egress fire doors at the north entrance, right in front of the stairwell, to provide a safety egress from the second floor out of the north entrance, in case there is ever any kind of an emergency upstairs or downstairs and we need to evacuate from the upstairs out that north entrance. I mean, all of our fire alarm proposals have been received, minus the magnetic hold open for those doors I just mentioned, which is not a huge item. That's all I got. Somebody got any questions?
Are we getting?
Any questions for Cole?
How far away are we from actual opening day?
Yeah, projection for completion.
Cause I thought it was in January, but not.
Yes, sir. That was, hopefully, yes, sir. That was my guesstimation, but I hope it'll be done in the next two months.
The roof really held us up.
I understand, I'm just saying, just for the public.
Shooting for the next two months, yes, sir. We're in there flying right now.
Okay. Any other questions for Cole? All right, thank you, Cole. Mr. Hartline, you go ahead and have the floor there.
The thing I wanna discuss, because we are getting close to finishing. Once the building is complete, who is over approving who's going in and who's getting the offices and what we're going to do with it? You know, it's been a long time coming to complete and we're getting there, so this is the topic that I think needs to be started.
The commission is the, is the end of it, that's, we'll, we'll approve. They can bring recommendations, the board can or historical, but it's, it's belongs to the county. It's belongs to the Dade County Commission governing authority and whoever's sitting in these seats right here will be the ones that actually says yes or no on, yeah.
We, I mean, I sit in those meetings and there is, I say we, but there is definitely plans. And all the plans that I have looked over or discussed all look very good to me. But of course, it would always come back, you know, to here to, but I sit in every month at those meetings.
That was just on my mind, we're thinking that we're fixing to get it complete. Have we done, got it filled up? Have we got as is of what we're going to put in it? I mean, that's what we need to be discussing in the next two months.
I think there's been some recommendations, Eddie.
We've not seen any. I've not seen any. This board has not seen any in the meeting, so.
Just verbal, it's been.
Well, too, we, we've discussed, or the historic commission has discussed, like a, a soft opening sort of thing. And it could also be some type of a fundraiser, which would be helpful. So there, there's been a lot discussed, but I don't think there, we're anywhere near presenting. I mean, Don, you could.
I think we would be, I mean, we could start, we need to formulate contracts and agreements and stuff and, and come, maybe next month. I mean, that would be within forty-five, well, I mean, we hope forty-five days, so.
It'd be close.
Say anything these days.
That's what I would like to see happen is have something presented before it's time to open, so, cause I'm sure they're gonna be wanting to move in.
Cause they need to know that, too.
Before it opens.
That's exactly, yeah. We'll just, we'll make it a point to do that next, by the next meeting, anyway, have something to look at on paper. Anything else on it?
No, that was, that was my only concerns.
All right, Ms. Paula DuVall.
Our chief appraiser.
Come up, you have the floor there. Tell us what you're here tonight for and.
All right. Basically, what I wanted to do, because it's getting that time for assessment notices to be mailed out, hopefully, we'll get those mailed out next Friday, the tenth. And what those assessment notices are, it just gives you your appraised value for this current tax year, which will be twenty twenty-four. You'll see last year's value, then you will see this year's value, you'll see your hundred percent value, which is the appraised value. Then you would also see your forty percent value, which is what your tax, Georgia taxes property at forty percent. So that's your actual taxable value. It does show you if you have your homestead exemptions, you know, things like that, so just be prepared for those to be mailed out. It can hit your mailbox this, not next week, but the week after. We do have a website. Everything will be updated to the website that should match your assessment notice. So you can, you know, go through, make sure we have everything factually correct. You can pull sales in your area. And if you disagree with the value that is presented, that is your forty-five day period to appeal that value. So make sure, you know, you really look at it and study it and look online and come into our office, you know, ask us any questions you want. We're glad to see you. And again, you know, that's your forty-five days to appeal. If you don't appeal within that forty-five days, your right to appeal is gonna be lost, so just wanted to get that out there to you. And what I wanna talk about today is just to give a little explanation of what we use to actually produce the values that you see on your assessment notice. What we use is what's called a sales ratio study. I did have some handouts out, out on the table. I don't know if anybody grabbed any, that kinda shows you what that looks like. And you'll see it up here on the screen, too. And the first screen you're gonna see is the ratio that I pulled in January before we made any changes whatsoever to property values. And what this sales ratio tells us is how well our appraised values match what actually sold. So you'll see, when, when you, when we get to the last page, you'll see the two different numbers. What a ratio basically is, is a number divided by a number, another number, and that's your ratio. This ratio is developed by dividing the assessed value by the sale price. That's gonna give you your ratio. And there's three specific numbers that through department of revenue, these are statistical numbers that we have to maintain that tell us if we are keeping up with the market. I mean, you know, we're talking about a fair market value. So the, the fair market value is defined as the amount an eligible buyer would pay and a willing seller would accept for a property at a bona fide arms-length sale. And that simply means a, a sale that was not affected by, you're related to somebody or there's a mobile home on the property or, you know, things like that. That would really not, that would really make it not a fair market value. So we do go through the sales, first of all, to try to see if it's in or not fair market. We disqualify those and we do not use those in the. So we do go through the sales, first of all, to try to see if it's a fair market. We disqualify those, and we do not use those in the pool of sales that we use to generate the sales ratio. So the first number that you're gonna see, and I've circled it, oh, I guess you didn't get the circles. Um, the very top line, you'll see the word median, and there's three numbers there, but we're gonna look at that mid, middle number that says actual. That's, that's the middle median number. Um, what that means, between all the ratios that are pulled, this is your middle number. And per Department of Revenue, that number should not be, it should be between a point three-six and a point four-oh. And the reason for that, again, Georgia taxes at forty percent. So if the, if the ratio is forty percent, then our value is exactly what the sale price was. So, you know, we try to get it as close as we can. Not everything's gonna be exactly like the sale price, uh, but we do, you know, that's where we work on that. Um, so when I pulled this in January, and remember the three-six to four-two, um, and this was after all the changes we made in the last three years where we've increased values. So this is a new pool of sales. These are your twenty twenty-three sales. We always use the previous year's sales, because we're trying to get a January first, uh, sale price, because Georgia tax dates January first. Um, so there was a hundred and twenty-six sales, and this is just your residential fair market, meaning residential properties that have a house on them. It doesn't include vacant land, doesn't include anything like that. It's just the residential properties. Uh, we came in at a point three-five-nine-two. So just pulling that first number right there, it ta- tells us that our values, our appraised values, are lower than what these properties are selling for. So that's the very first thing we're gonna look at. So when we see that, we know there's a problem. We know there's something that is behind the scenes, that our values are not keeping up with the market. They're not keeping up with what is actually selling. So the next thing we're gonna do is we're going to define that problem. We're gonna try to figure out what is affecting these property values in, and on, on our side. Why are our sale, why are our appraised values not in line with the sale prices? So we can pull hundreds of different kinds of sales ratios, so that's what we do. We start in January, and we just pull all neighborhoods, we pull subdivisions, we pull classes of property. We pull your fair market, we pull your land market, we can pull older homes, newer homes. So we, we go through these, and we test different things to, to try to pinpoint exactly where the problem is. Why are our appraised values lower than the sale prices? So that's, that's the very first thing that we did, and that takes, you know, quite a while, because we wanna make sure that what we change, if anything needs to be changed, that it is the correct thing to do, that it is gonna make our appraised values more in line with what has actually sold, what the sale prices actually were. So that's the first number we look at. And the first thing we do, once we see that, we start working, we start studying, and we try to define what that problem is. And then the next step, we make whatever necessary changes we have found to the appraised value of all property in the county, so that our properties are more in line with the market values. That's how you're gonna get a market value, is to study the market. So that's, that's what a sales ratio study is. And then the second number underneath there, you'll see COD. That number, COD, that's the coefficient of dispersion. That measures uniformity. Are we using the same methods to value these classes of properties? Are we using the same base rates? Are we using the same depreciation rates? Are we using the same grade? You know, all kinds of things go into that. So that number, per Department of Revenue standards, for residential properties should be, not be above a point one-five. And for all non-residential properties, that should not be above a point two-oh. So with your residential properties, these are just the residential properties, we were okay with our COD. So uniformly across the board, our values were okay, but across the board, our values, in most cases, were still low compared to what the actual market was. So that's the second number we're gonna look at. And the third number we're gonna look at is the PRD. That's the price-related differential. That measures bias, uh, progressivity and regressivity. Are we only changing the higher value properties and not changing the lower, or vice versa? So that number, again, per Department of Revenue standards, should be a point nine-five to a one-point-one-zero. So that number, again, it was okay. We're at a one-point-oh-five. And these numbers, again, are before we make any changes at all. So there's your first step. So after we went through this year and, uh, studied the sales, figured out what the problem was, made our changes, which, across the board, uh, for all residential properties, rural properties, agricultural properties, you know, everybody gets, gets the same thing. You'll see our median, which is up at the top there, again, once we made the changes, it went from a point three-five-nine to a point three-eight-six. So that tells us, after the studies we did, after the changes we made, that now we have our appraised values in line with our market values. So that's, that's, that tells us that what we've done is what we needed to do.
What did you change? What, what did you?
I'll talk about that in just a second.
Well, I was just asking, and, no.
You might miss that, right? Yeah, that's, that's a big.
Yeah, oh, yeah, it is.
Beach memorized.
The COD, after the changes, went from point one-five to point one-two, and you do try to tighten that up, because the more tight that is, the more uniform everything is, and the closer to that sales, uh, ratio that all your properties, your sale prices are. And then the PRD, it went down just a little bit at one-point-oh-three. So before we made our changes, you, you could see where it was off. After we made our changes, you can see, per Department of Revenue standards, we are now, our appraised values are now in line with your market values. So that's just a brief description of what we look at. I did include, uh, the next page, what an actual, uh, sales ratio study looks like. It gives a lot of information. It's gonna give the partial number, it gives the buyer and the seller, it gives the sale date, date of the page. The top number is your sale price, the bottom number is the assessed value. Assessed value is the forty percent value of what our appraised value is. And then on the very last column there, you'll see the ratio. So you'll see this is, uh, residential rural fair market properties, meaning they have a house on them, on two to five acres. There was fifteen of those. This is countywide. And, uh, our median, and this is after the changes, our median came in at point three-eight-five-nine, our COD at point zero-nine, and our PRD at point nine-eight. So based on this sales ratio, just with this little group of, of sales, um, after the changes we made, our appraised values are in line with these market sales, with the market values. Um, so that's, I just wanted to come give a little presentation to kinda explain the process of what we use, uh, when we determine appraised values uh, for, for properties here in the county. Um, there's a lot more to it. I mean, I could talk for hours on this, but I wanted to be brief and just give a basic description um, to let you know what we actually look at and how we actually determine whether we're gonna make any changes in value or not. Now, what did change this year? We did have to increase the base dollar per square foot again. It went from one-twenty-five to one-thirty-five. And again, that's just the base rate. That don't mean your property or your house is at a hundred and thirty-five dollars per square foot. That's just where it starts. Now, a lot of things will affect that dollar per square foot, to either make it go up, stay where it is, or it's gonna go down. That could be the age of the house, um, grade of the house, which grade we use to, um, account for design of the house, quality of materials used, um, year built will have a lot to do with that. Uh, so again, we did have to increase that, uh, so take a look at your, your residences and your properties and, you know, again, really think about, based on, you know, the sales that we have, and we can show you sales in your area, you know, in your subdivision, you know, whatever, wherever you live. So you can see the sales that took place in your area to compare to the value we have on your property. To see if, you know, well, you're saying I could get two-hundred thousand. There's no way. Well, we had three houses around you that sold for two-hundred fifty, so, you know. There, there's things that, like that, that we can show you, um, to justify the values that we put on the properties. Um, let's see, some, uh, rural properties did increase. Actually, it wasn't the dollar per acre, it was, you know, a behind-the-scenes, uh, things called the desirability and accessibility. And what the accessibility measures is where you are in the county. Look at mountains of one, valleys of two, sand mountains of three. And then the desirability is where we take into account your specific piece of property within that area. You know, are you landlocked? Do you have road frontage? Is there a big ravine running through your property, or things like that? We do take that into consideration, uh, when you look at landowners. So that's, that's what changed, the tables behind there. So, um, some of you might have a land and a residential change. Some of you might just have a residential change. Just, just pay attention to, to your value, and please come in and talk to us, ask us questions. Um, we, we wanna show you, you know, this is why I wanted to bring this to you, to kinda show you what we use, um, when we set values for a particular tax digest year. Does anybody have any questions?
I'd like, I'd like for you to explain the website, how to effect it, effectively use it to compare your values with your neighbors or.
Sure, sure. Yeah, our website is, uh, www dot Qpublic dot net backslash GA backslash date. I don't think I gave it to, um, to the gentleman here. But on that website, you can get tons of information. You can pull up your particular piece of property, and it will give you everything separated, your house, what it's valued, it'll have all the sales information, it'll have your land and, and what it's valued. I think it ha- it goes back like four or five years, so you can see the value for the last four or five years. You can pull sales, um, for your neighborhood, uh, it, the maps are up there. You can look at the maps, and you can click on a property beside you, and it'll pull that property up, so you can see what their property value is. Now, keep in mind, we're not talking about taxes. We're talking about your value. Uh, you know, we have a lot of people come in, well, I have, my neighbor has a bigger house than, than I do, but their taxes are less. Well, they might have senior exemptions that you don't have, so their taxes could be lower. We're just, we're only value. We, we don't do taxes. So look at your assessment notice, look on our, uh, website, look around, you know, do some research around. And if you truly feel like what the value we have is, is not anywhere near what you think you could sell it for, what you could get it for on the market. Whether you plan on selling it or not, we are required by Georgia law to set a fair market value, and that's what we do. So, you know, that's, we want you to come in, we want you to know, you know, we're very transparent about what we do, what we use. Um, and we encourage you to come in, talk to us if you have any questions. Um, it's too late to apply for homestead exemptions for twenty twenty-four, but you can come in anytime between now and, and next April first of twenty twenty-five to apply for any homestead exemptions you might apply, you might qualify for. Um, if you have a large tract of property, anything over ten acres and above, um, there's a state conservation covenant that you can apply for, if that's something you might be interested in. It is a tax break on the land itself. So there's lots of things out there, um, but you just have to come in and see us or call us. Our number is, um, seven oh six, six five seven, six three four one. Um, and like I said, assessment notices will be going out next Friday, the tenth. Our board meeting, uh, will be that Thursday, and then we'll get them in the mail next Friday. And the forty-five day starts the day they're mailed, not the day you receive it. So forty-five days will be from May the tenth to June twenty-fifth, because we do have two holidays. And that forty-five days does include Saturdays and Sundays. So, any more questions?
Any questions?
Paula, last year, the governor gave, and I know you called Angie yesterday that.
Uh-huh.
He gave everybody a break. We'll put that.
That had a homestead.
That will not happen.
But my understanding, we will not get that additional eighteen thousand tax credit that we got last year if you had a state homestead exemption, so that's, that's the latest we've heard.
Okay.
And explaining this, this is a requirement of the state. It's not about trying to get more money for the county and.
We follow the tax portion of the OCGA, the Official Code of Georgia, annotated. Um, so we, we follow the tax portion of that, forty-eight-five is, I think, our, the tax portion. And Department of Revenue, we, we get our specifics from Department of Revenue.
And if we don't keep those values at forty percent.
We can, we can be penalized.
We can get penalized and fined. It's all about uniformity. It's about keeping everybody fairly taxed.
Right.
So, that's the, that's the, I served on the Board of Assessors for a couple of years and learned a lot, and their job is about trying to treat everybody equal, uniformity, so I enjoy that. I just wanted everybody to know, it's not about the assessor's office trying to get more money in the county coffers. It's settling in a requirement of the state to keep everything uniform, so.
And we do have monthly meetings. The Board of Assessors does have monthly meetings. We don't ever have anybody show up, but we'd be more than happy to have you. We meet, uh, the second Thursday of every month, uh, in the, uh, assessor's office, uh, at the end of the hall down there. So at five o'clock, so we'd be more than happy to have you. Any more questions?
I think you did a great job.
Yeah, good job.
I've had to take, like, three classes.
Yeah. Oh, I could talk for hours. We just gotta give a little brief explanation.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you. Okay, let's move down to the, um, number eight. This is, uh, I'm sorry, move down to number nine. This is, uh, ordinance zero four dash zero four dash sixteen, uh, meaning the ABC ordinance for the golf course licensing. Well, um, you know, we actually tabled these last week, so, and we talked about them weeks before and right prior to that, but Mr. Hartline, let's go around the table.
Well, can I say, uh?
Yeah.
I would like to, um, if we could, can we discuss it and then take it for a vote?
We'll have to vote in, yeah.
Here, or?
No, we don't vote here.
That's what I thought, so.
No, we can vote, we can, we can, uh, discuss it, and then we can.
Cause this would be.
Vote on every one of them. That way, people can see how you vote. Anything you wanna discuss there, Mr. Hartline?
No, I'm good with it.
No. Flowery?
Nine, ten, and eleven ought to do with alcohol sales. I will, I won't be supporting it.
Okay. And Mr. Raffin?
Uh, uh, yeah, I'm okay with it.
You got anything you wanna discuss? We'll vote.
No, I've looked into this as much as anything I ever have, and read the vote and put it to rest. I think we've had our reading, right?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
And one of them, Mr. Watlamart, is, one of them has to do with the brown bagging.
That's what I was gonna say very quickly, miss, unless I just explain the, the changes quickly.
Yeah, I would like to, well, I'd like to kinda clear that up, because I think it came across as that it wasn't going to be allowed, but it is state-regulated. Um, what, and we kinda reworded it, because it's, it's more of, uh, possession on premises, uh, that already has a license. So that's when you're looking at, you know, you cannot have anybody bring in anything that's, that's not, when you have a license. And it was kinda stated at the meeting last time that it was, um, not gonna be permitted to, to have brown bagging, but it's a state law that, you know, if you're, you can do that. So we, I mean, I guess we could.
So what?
Change that, but.
Because I asked that question, because it did look that way.
It did. It read that way.
If I run a restaurant right now, I don't have any license for any alcohol. People can, I can say you can bring it in.
Yeah.
If I go get a license now, I wanna start selling it, they can no longer bring it in. But they can take it into Sally and Joe's Restaurant if they don't have a license.
Yeah.
Because it did come off, is nobody could, nobody could brown bag anymore.
Yeah, that's the way it came across, which that's not, I mean, that, and that's why we're trying to get compliant with the state, so that we're not over doing anything or underdoing anything. Because the state is going, they're actually changing their whole, uh, liquor license, uh, process and program. So, uh, we'll probably have a whole new, uh, uh, application pretty soon, and that's probably any day, so. So not only will the state have an application, uh, the county has an application itself, so. Um, and then, of course, it would have to go through the ABC Board and then back through, uh, the commission.
I think I know the answer to this question. Robin, I'll ask you. When we do this for the golf course, and then a year from now, the golf course sales, does this follow them, or is it gone?
The, the ordinance will still be there, but they would have to go through.
They would have to go and.
They have to go through the same process, so they would have to go through.
So they may choose not to, or they may.
Right, right.
I just did, well, the question was, did it just carry over, 'cause I know in convenience stores, it does not. If you buy a convenience store, you've gotta come and get your license, not.
Even if, even if somebody purchased the golf course, if there was a name change at all, it would have to be, they would have to go through the whole filing system.
Okay. Good enough.
Okay, we'll, we'll vote on, um, nine, ten.
I don't know that I've answered your question.
Um, one of these under, like, unfinished finish, when we get up there, you don't do it, run, like, on the, um, when he actually goes over, um, agenda, I mean, the consent agenda.
Yeah, yeah, I would think we can do it, uh, under, either under, unfinished, or it's a second reading, so we can do it under.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Either way, either way, okay. All right. You got anything else you wanna bring to the table, any of you? Okay. John? Probably. Okay, we'll go ahead and, we'll. John, probably. Okay, we'll go ahead and, we'll adjourn our work session for about five minutes or so and take a break, and then we'll come back and go into a regular meeting.
We call a meeting to order. Thanks for everyone being here tonight. And, uh, as always, um, before we start the meeting, we ask Brother Goff here to actually say, say the prayer for us and also please believe. If everyone will stand up, please.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you again for just being able to be here and do the business of the county. We thank you for everyone who's come to, uh, to listen or to speak and whatever they're here for. We know that we're in the middle of a, an election season, not only in our communities, but in our nation. So Lord, we just pray that you would continue to bless those who are running and, and, uh, Lord, get people out, let people come out and vote and vote their conscience. And Lord, we just thank you for that freedom. It's one of the greatest freedoms that we have, and it didn't come cheap. I know that, uh, over the years, it's took a lot to get us to that place. So Lord, with that, we do as always, thank our first responders and those who are standing in harm's way for us tonight, wherever they may be. We just pray you continue to bless them. Lord, we're thankful for those that you have touched physically, Lord, that are, uh, here tonight. We pray, God, that you would just continue to touch them, and we pray that you would bless now this commission. Lord, we do the business of this county to the very best that we know how and we can. Continue to bless our county, bless our city, bless our nation, and bless our world. We ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Robert. This is a regular scheduled meeting of the Dade County Board of Commissioners. It takes place, uh, at the same time on the first Thursday of every month. Proper notice, this meeting is given to our legal origin, Dade County, and has been posted in the hallway. At this time, I do need a roll call. Mr. Lowry?
Here.
Hartline?
Present.
Mr. Goff?
Here.
Mr. Bradford?
Here.
Chair is present. Okay, Mr. Lowry. Well, hang on just a minute. I know I do this every time I get on the right page here. All right. Anyone who can come up and talk to us, we'll give you five minutes tonight. If you want to come up and podium, tell us who you are and state your comments. Okay. Don't have anybody tonight, so.
We got one.
Oh, we got a light?
Yeah.
Light hand there. Okay.
All right, hopefully my last one here. First off, I apologize to those out there beyond this room for me rushing in past meetings to speed read and cram everything I say in the five minutes that applies only to citizens and not government who do not get warned before they speak. Ted's personal policy just doesn't make sense in this tiny county where most meetings are completely empty of citizens, and the line to speak is shorter than that. And do you warn the library or Alliance for Dade or anyone on government payroll that they only get five minutes to speak? Nope. You warn just the people, and you think that's fair. Maybe it's because most of you sitting in office, running for these offices or getting paid by the people have never been on this side of the podium and received Ted's warning. And do you think nobody notices that you call in additional law enforcement for when citizens talk? Do your government speakers ever get that treatment? Nope. And you can use the Sentinel to print huge columns of examples of how it's good and normal for citizens to be limited by government, but go back through the election speeches when you were running for office. You never said anything about you supporting only citizens getting limits put on them. You talked about citizens' rights and how you afford the people. Well, why are the people the only ones you limit here? So I am just not going to let Ted get his way. And I'll keep talking in an unrushed, normal pace. And if someone wants to donate me their five minutes, I'll finish up. Otherwise, as your website says, that participation in meetings by public spirited residents is encouraged, I will just keep coming here every month until I do it, five minutes at a time. So two pages, and I know you already started my clock, so with the three minutes or so I have left tonight, I might get past where I was stopped last month, maybe. So on March 7th, I spoke over here of years of issues and complaints from citizens that the commission has ignored. Two months later, and not a single reply to any of them. Apparently, whether it's face to face, inches from you, or a legal formal information request, I will be ignored one way or another, and all of you in good conscience are okay with that. But I guarantee you that Memorial and Veterans and Armed Forces Day, you'll tell everyone how you respect and honor all veterans, yet you have a 24-year military veteran in front of you who swore an oath to die for you and die for your families and die for this country, but you, on the other hand, allow yourselves to cut off and desert your service to me. And even though I pay you and deliver 18 issues right to your lap in this, right here, I am still not worthy of a response ever by Team Rumly. So from last month, how, where, and which of you is tracking and responding to the citizen issues we speak about in our time here? And if you aren't just ignoring citizens and throwing their concerns away, where is the posted transparent list of these concerns and how they were resolved for all these many decades? The Thursday KWN segment, for years, with rare exception, always the county executive, but then recently, instead of the county executive, the assistant commissioner, three other district commissioners, and a communication director, we pay additionally to be the of the commission. For almost six weeks in a row, the people got number seven on the list, county clerk. All of the other six are all of a sudden not available for a weekly program that has been going on for years? Right. This has the appearance of county government endorsing one of their own who is running for office. But since this is on government time, on the taxpayers' dime, people who wouldn't even think about voting for council ever are now indirectly supporting his campaign by you giving him out of the normal airtime when he is not the county executive and is actually way down on the list that people pay to get information from weekly. This use of government to influence the election is not fair to the other candidates and is wrong ethically, morally, and probably legally. And why would you want Dade to be known for stuff like this? And you have already said that the outdated district map you use could expose Dade to an election lawsuit. So why would you do anything to risk that even more? And speaking of lawsuits, recently, the commission wrote on Facebook that they would love for a volunteer or two to come do unpaid work at the transfer station. Now, all it takes is one injury, intentional or unintentional, and this plan goes up in flames as taxpayers owe the person a disability check and potentially millions of dollars for the rest of their lives. At the very least, volunteers need to sign a waiver so the cost of injuries from your citizen free program is not the burden of all taxpayers in the county.
Okay, your five minutes are up. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else want to talk to us tonight?
Just so y'all know who I am, uh, my name's Patrick Akey. I live back in the New Home Community. Um, I don't know what can be done about it or the profit for it, but in the last few weeks and probably before that, uh, from Brow Road to right before you get to that church on the right, just past the 2200 block, there's three or four, might be a little bit more passing, uh, areas where people can pass, go around traffic. Me, I go, the speed limit's 45. I might go a few over, but I don't go real fast through there. And there are multiple occasions where I get passed like I'm sitting still. Um, and I didn't know if there would be a way to get rid of that because it's in a very residential area of Brow Road. You got people that come out of the driveways. Uh, there's a few people that walk down the road, uh, just to get their exercise in the mornings, and I've seen a couple almost get hit just because people drive crazy through there. Uh, I didn't know if there was a way where we could just double line that through the residential part. Uh, as soon as you get out of that curve and in between the pine areas, once you get past all the houses until you get to New Home Road, you can leave that to where they can pass. And I get passed on New Home Road and none of that is a passing areas. So I know double lines are not going to stop somebody from just passing if they want to. But at least it makes it a law that if you get caught doing it, then you can get pulled over. What needs to be done?
What's the speed limit, did you say?
Forty five.
It is posted forty five.
It's posted forty five. And, uh, from as soon as you turn on Brow Road until around the 2160 or 2200 block of Brow Road, there's about three or four spots where people can pass. And there's no need to go any faster than. And there's no need to go any faster than 50 through there just because it's very residential. So I didn't know if it needed...
When we have our line crew up here, which is going to be in June before we get to start our paving, we can do that. We can, we get, we work with the sheriff's department and let Tommy go out there and evaluate it too, you know? And then we can double line on our county roads, uh, pretty much anywhere that we feel is a danger.
Yeah, I know it's not a state road, so the county will be the one that decided to do that or not, but I didn't know if it needed to be where, because I don't live on Brow Road, but I travel it daily, just like everybody else. So I'm looking out for the people that walk through there, got to pull out of their driveways, and a car comes flying down through there. Half the time, it might be the linemen. They're not from around here. They probably don't care as much, but I'm just looking out for others that drive through there. But I didn't know if it needed to be something where we needed signatures or something like that to get that...
We can look at it and...
Well, too, I mean, just, I know before I was in this position, because I'm in the same, I'm on scenic highway, and I mean, they turn my corner and they, they go 90. So I, you know, I just put in a call and said, you know, can, can there be an extra patrol through here every once in a while? So, and that kind of, that, you know, that, it doesn't solve the problem, but it helps.
Yeah, I mean, at least with the double lines, if, you know, someone wants to pass through there because there's not always a cop up there, but, you know?
Well, just ca- call in and just let them know, and, you know, they could, they could send somebody out just to, you know, it wouldn't be like main thing, but it...
Yeah.
They would hit it every, maybe a couple more times or something.
But at least with the double lines, it would kind of, it would make it, you know, illegal to do.
Yeah, because that is a pretty, uh, used road, so...
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of traffic, so... But I just wanted to bring it up.
Okay.
See if we could get something done about it.
Tommy's here tonight, too. He can kind of, you know, evaluate too, get a lot of officer out there, but, you know, may sit there all day and may not, you know, might not witness anything, you know, maybe, you know? But then again, if we do the lines, which that's a good idea, we can just look at it and see. That way, if they do, um, you know, stop someone or whatever, uh, you know, they can, they definitely got a violation. They might not even write them a speeding ticket, but passing on W lines is illegal, you know?
Yeah, I mean, like I said...
Because there's laws, Tommy, there's laws about, you know, the county, uh, actually writing speeding tickets on county roads. I mean, it's a little different.
Yeah, so there's a list that we have that are approved by the state that we can run radar on on county roads. And, uh, I think Brow Road is on there, but it's in certain areas of Brow Road.
Yeah.
So, um, I mean, they're up there quite a bit, but not all of them have radars, so...
Yeah.
But we do have a handheld, people starting to use more that we just purchased, so...
Yeah.
We have the points like speeding in certain areas will go up there, but like you said, it's not a approved road by the state that we can ride on, and you can't, we're not too fast in condition. Really, it doesn't do a whole lot, there's no points attached to it, so, uh, if we're on what we can do, we can run on speeding on certain roads.
Yeah. Yeah, but I, like I said, I, it's an extra layer of legal stuff that they can do, so, thank you.
Before you sit down?
Yes.
I'd like to say, there's something special about Patrick. Me and him share a birthday together, May the 4th. I started it was on the commission meeting night, but me and Patrick ran against each other...
Only once.
Only once, but it's been 10 or 12 years ago. It's been a good while back, but we got to become close friends. And I, we're still close friends now, and, uh, so Saturday's his birthday and it's going to be mine. So would everybody like to sing Happy Birthday to Patrick? Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday dear Patrick. Happy birthday to you.
That may be a first.
Yeah. Thank you.
Probably be a last, too. Could be.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Mr. Lowry, you want to start with your committee before, please?
Yeah, yeah. After I've embarrassed myself, I might as well.
No, that's great.
The total EMS calls for the second quarter of April were 936, that's EMS calls. The fire departments were at 1144. The Trenton City Police were at 27, and I'm missing a number there evidently. I'm missing a number, but that's okay. The total calls for the month are 2107, unless some number's been lifted. But anyway, that's, we're running about where we normally do, so... We had 12 new E911 addresses. And, and, uh, 32, is that for the year, Patrick, or?
Thirty-two for the year.
Thirty-two for the year. Yes. We continue to grow, follow us talking about growth. If we continue to get bigger, even though they, they say our census is lower. The internet in Wildwood, the Creek Road area, Pope Creek Road, State Line, they still like a couple weeks of testing on it. Some, my folks have become very impatient with the phone company, but they're, they're, they've got a lot of government regulations to follow when it's not as easy as what you think. Just hook, hooking the wires is the easy part. Filling up all the regulations is the hard part. So I'm asking everybody to be patient, because I've had people with great influence and people with little influence calling, uh, the phone company and giving them a hard time. I've been working closely with Adam Austin, Ted, has helped, helped me too with them. They're doing all they can do as fast as they can do, and they want it too because it's money. It's money coming back into their pocket, that money that some, that they've outlaid out of their own pocket, so... I'm asking everybody's patience, but hopefully within the next, they know they got at least a couple more weeks of paperwork and testing to, to complete. So with that said, please be patient and give them, I mean, it's hard. We, we don't have any, we don't have any kind of internet. So I'm lucky, I live on a big ridge there in Wildwood, and I can get it through Verizon, but it's still not as fast, and I can't get TV. I had to have satellite TV, and, but we're looking, we're looking forward to it. My wife is, lives on the computer, and I hope I don't get beat up when I get home. But she loves computers, so she's really looking forward to it, and I know everybody else is, so it's, please be patient, and they're working hard to try to get it completed. The road in Sligo, that, where the bridge fell in, Maine, is Maine, isn't it? Yeah, the bridge has been completed.
New England, yeah.
But New Eng, yeah, New England Road, and it's called Main Street. It's M-A-I-N-E, named after the one, I guess that's New York, isn't it? But anyway, there's a lot of streets in there named Rhode Island and New Hampshire. There's a lot of good, interesting history about that if you'll read, about the iron ore and how those roads got their names. But anyway, the bridge that fell in, the, actually caved in. It's back up, it's open. We don't, we're waiting on asphalt to begin our summer paving. What'd you say, June or?
First week in June, yeah.
First week in June, so it'll be paved, but it's in good shape just because Billy Putt gravels across it and compacted them down, the crusher running, this, this light riding on asphalt. It looks nearly like it's asphalted, but it's not. But, but we will finish that up soon. Quick report on my health, uh... I may have to skip that.
Okay. You know, move on here. Go ahead, Phil.
AU has got a baseball tournament this weekend at the sports complex. The other teams are still playing. They should be done by the 23rd of May. Then they're going in, I think AU is starting an All-Star team, and then they'll play forward. Soccer will be finishing up by the 18th of May. Then the 16th, 17th, 18th, and 19th, we have the yard sale, and we're renting spaces out again for people to come in, to set up, to sell stuff. And then Stacy, I've, me and him's been in contact this month, but I've just, we've missed on getting the printout on our permits and stuff, so I didn't get with him on that. We've been working on other things. On Sand Mountain at the corner of 136 and 301, Dollar General has started the site work for the new Dollar General, and I'm, I'm told that it's going to be a Dollar General...
Market.
Market, so it'll have more groceries and stuff than just, than just a regular Dollar General.
Yep.
And that's all I have for this month.
Okay. Mr. Goff? All right, uh, our splotch this month came in at $319,249. That's, uh, only about $3,000 less than last year, and, uh, so it was a very good, very good month. And I'm going to say this, there's a new lineman class start, where they're all coming in today. The, uh, and that's about 400, I guess, 300 or 400 people, and I run in Ingles to get something, and I couldn't tell you how many of them's already in there with mom and daddy or whoever came with them stocking their refrigerators. So, uh, that's money that for the weeks they're gone, a couple of weeks they're gone, that we missed that. So they contribute, I know sometimes, uh, they were mentioned here a minute ago, and, and, uh, sometimes they get a bad rap and they are not from here and whatever. But, uh, we notice a sales tax loss when they're not here because they all have to eat somewhere, and they can't, most of them cannot go back home. So, uh, they will be starting a 15-week class probably tomorrow, so, uh, that again will add to our traffic woes. I do want to mention Dollar General, uh, Philip just did, but one of the, I can't believe one of the biggest questions I've been asking the last month is why another Dollar General? And I just want to tell everybody out there, we don't bring in Dollar Generals. We don't have anything to do with it, but just like Philip said, they hope it's a, one that has more groceries because those people live in those communities, and now they can go get a, a jug of milk or whatever they may need without coming all the way to Trenton, they're tickled to death. And again, we just had, uh, requests for about $128,000 of splotch money from our fire departments and from the sheriff's department. And they contribute to that. Everybody that buys contributes to that, and, uh, you think the, the air packs and all that, they would need, the tasers they would need, whether we had splotched or didn't have it. But thank God that it has been up for two or three years now and continues to stay up. And I hope, uh, it's a trend we've gotten used to, but you never know when it might change. But it, it's all these things I'm talking about that contribute to, and also the lost penny we have, it contributes to your property taxes. So Don can explain that when it comes time to do it, but that helps the rollback property taxes for that penny on the lost and then the e-splotched and the schooled, so we're blessed to have those. Football team is back. Philip mentioned what's going on in forefield. Football team's having their spring practice. If you're interested, they'll be playing next Friday night. Their spring game will be at Plainview High School. That's out, top of the mountain at Rainsville. And, uh, if you're waiting on it to get started, it's hard to believe it's that time of year, but it won't be long till school's out and then, uh, back in in a hurry, so... But, uh, they will be playing next week at Plainview High School against Plainview for a spring game. Be kind of interesting if you want to go. Thank you. All right, Mr. Bradford?
Yeah, I have a special fellow on that team, too, so...
Yeah, one of many.
Okay, I got quite a bit to go over, so, um, I want to just touch base because I feel like I haven't done it in a while with the transit. Make sure that, you know, that's out there and it's on the website. I have had some calls about how it works and, um, you know, our, our website is, is kept up really well, so... Um, and the senior center, uh, just touch bases on that. Everything, there's been some, uh, great updates over there, and we're still trying to keep trucking with, with those updates. I wanted to mention that I am, uh, I got a conference that I'm going to next week on the tire scrap, um, on how to recycle tires properly and what counties do and cities do and states do. And I'm super excited about that. It's, I mean, it, it's a pretty big conference, so there's going to be a lot of people there and a lot of, lot of information that I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to be recording everything because I probably won't remember everything. And then our next weekend, yes, the 11th is our tire amnesty. It is eight to two or three, but Ted always likes to show up at seven.
Well, you gotta get the tent set up and get everything ready, get everybody ready.
He always beats me every year. I'm always like, okay, I'm going to get there, and he, you know, but he always beats me. But, um, so that'll be, uh, we've had, I've had a few calls about some, some different, you know, if they're hauling something for their parents or their, um, so you may see some trailers there that are, that don't have Dade County tags, but they're probably hauling for their parents or something like that. So I know that that's always a big, a big issue, but, um, I've, I've had those calls and I've okayed those people. And the, the people are elderly and have moved, they've moved them back into, to their hometown, and, um, the younger generation's taking care of them, and they're trying to help their, clean their house out. There's a bunch of tires in their garage and stuff like that. So, um, I have spoke to those people and they have called me. So I just wanted everybody to get that out there, that you might see some, some tags that are not Dade County tags. And then I also, uh, just wanted to kind of go over, I know that there's a lot of confusion on the, the ordinance that's, uh, being passed or going to be passed. And I just kind of wanted to give a little bit of background. When I came into this seat, um, I, I knew more than what I thought I knew, but I still was not in a, a comfortable place. So, um, I knew there was some wants and needs, um, and there was some venues that had reached out to me. So I just, I picked that up. It wasn't necessarily what I jumped out there to do, but there was definitely a need. So first I helped out with the venues that, that they would have to have bartenders, um, that, and it helped them have liability for their place because they were just, their people were coming in with coolers, and they couldn't regulate who was drinking or not drinking. So it was, I had a background in hospitality, so it was just something that I really had the information and knew a little about, so Patty and I, you know, got to work in the ABC board. So that's kind of where all this came up. Well, then I found, um, you know, that things were passed in 2017, and really, there wasn't a whole lot of updates, um, and things were kind of put in place because we didn't have the laws that we needed, and we were not in the place that we are now. But we're there now, so it has to be looked at. So the golf course, of course, has come to us for, I know as long as I have been here, so I know probably prior to that. And it's also another situation where they don't have control of what's being out on the, on the field, and they, they, or course, I don't know, I'm not a golf person. So they want, they want to have a little bit more control, and of course, if anything happens, it, it comes back to the county because we don't have ordinance that, that control those things. So I just kind of got to work and started reading, reading everybody's ordinance, probably in North Georgia, the state laws, and, um, you know, there was definitely a need, and so I just kind of pushed forward. So it's kind of been a bam 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 sort of, sort of thing. So this, this was a lot of work to figure out the right situation for our town that we didn't go overboard. So, uh, we looked up and of course, Rob, I've had, he, he's probably, oh gosh, he's calling again, you know, to make sure that we were in compliance and, and by the law. So, uh, we came up with the factor of a golf course. So, you know, what you could do at the golf course is not necessarily what you could do at a restaurant because they're completely different. So, um, that, that's where that ordinance, um, comes into play. So then we went a little bit further, and, um, I know the, the word, uh, brown... Um, so then we went a little bit further, and, um, I know the, the word, uh, brown bag, you know, was, it was kinda, it was stated, and I, I felt like it was stated diff, you know, not well, um, and it kinda sounded like you couldn't do it. But it is state-regulated that, um, if there was a place that opened up, um, that was within the boundaries of the state law, that you could brown bag there. Um, that is not really where we wanna take our, I mean, we've been very fortunate with the restaurants that we have, that they've operated the way they did, and they did a very gr- good job, and, and have done well. But that's not a direction we really wanna go forward. We want, we want things to be regulated, we want, um, um, not, I don't mean it like regulated, but we, we wanna give our owners of these venues and of these restaurants, uh, control of what they have, um, because I know every, we have a lot of small business owners in, in the audience, and, um, it's in, it's important to you, it's yours, you know, like your home, your stuff, so you wanna be able to take care of it the right way. So, um, that's kind of where that comes into play, is where, um, you, you, you can still do that, but that's not really a direction we wanna go, and hopefully this will give restaurants that are already here, running more income, or more ways to sustain, uh, what they're doing, and up, do updates, and do what they need to do, uh, with being able to go a step further and do, and sell spirits. Um, and hopefully that'll kinda push some people to kinda go that direction, and bring in a few more restaurants. Um, then we have, uh, I think, well, that kinda put, that put it all together, so that, the ordinance was with the distilled spirits, that was put in years ago, before I think we even had Liquor by the Drink, um, about the, the exits. And that was kinda put in place, because I think we really didn't know what direction it was gonna go, and we felt like that, um, those were probably the places that restaurants would pop up, or something. But we, we have found now that that's not the case. We have, you know, different restaurants in different locations. I'm not real familiar with Sand Mountain, but I know on my mountain, we, you know, we had the pizza place, and Kenyon Grill, and one thirty-six at one time did sell, um, and so they need to, they're pretty high use, you know, uh, highways, and they need to be able to, to be with the market, and be with the rest of the people that are gonna be popping up. So it was, it's, it's a little bit of a need, but it's also hopefully a support system too, for these people, so. Um, and of course, if there's any questions, it's taken me nearly, you know, a year and a half to, to figure this out for myself, so, you know, please reach out, ask questions, um, if I could help in any way. There, the ABC Board's there, uh, Patty works really hard, uh, at her job too, uh, I'm always available, so hopefully that helps.
That it?
Yep.
All right, thank you. Okay, it's been a pretty busy month. We got, um, give a little report on the depot, uh, down there, we're, uh, remodeling it for the, um, public defender, and, and moving our ASS office. They actually finished a sheet rock, finished it up yesterday, and, uh, they set the doors today, uh, they'll be putting flooring down. Actually, got, they got some painting to do next week, and then the floor will be put down, so by this time next month, we're gonna be really close to, um, to, you know, getting finished with it. Um, the, uh, outside of it will be, um, you know, color-wise, uh, we're gonna go back with the, uh, original old, uh, gray depot color, like you normally, your normal color for the depots throughout the, uh, Great Alabama Southern, or Norfolk Southern, uh, and try to make it look like, uh, you know, similar to the period it was built. But it's gonna be a nice building, be something to be proud of, uh, proud of, and a good, it's gonna be a good structure. It is a good, a good structure. Uh, Phillip mentioned the, uh, Dollar General on, on the mountain, and so did Robert, and as Robert said, you know, it's, they call us, they call us to, you know, uh, they have to get their, their permitting through us, as far as the, uh, soil erosion, um, plans, and then that takes months, actually it takes a couple of months to go through all that. But, um, we don't necessarily go out and solicit Dollar Generals, they, they come, and they pick these sites, and they're pretty sure, I mean, they know, when they come in and they, they zoom in on the site, uh, that's what they want, that's what they want. They don't want it a mile in a row, or two miles in a row, and their reason for that out there is that traffic count that, uh, that's going left, when it gets to that stop sign going into Alabama, going toward, um, the Alabama line there on three oh one. And so they, they know what they're doing, and it will be a, a larger store, it'll handle, it's, it's not like anyone we got in Day County. It'll handle, uh, a lot of groceries, and, uh, and some dry goods too, you know, I mean, as far as, so, um, and it's, it's more revenue for us, I mean, it is, it's, I don't, I know we appreciate the one in Risingford, and I hate to see it close now, but we, they do a good business, and it saves us from driving to Trenton, you know, to get a box of washing power, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it's really a, a good, a good store for us, but, um.
The one on two ninety-nine is for the.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's used very well, you know, right there, you know, so. Um, I did get a report a while ago, a carry brought this by, and, uh, we've, up till today, up till today, we've had three hundred and fourteen, uh, that's voted in the county. Uh, is that right? That's the latest, right? Okay. I figured I'd forget that. Um, and Mr. Hartline, we've talked about this, uh, last week, and, and we're working on this, and we're trying to put some figures together. We've got Alex doing, uh, some figuring with, um, working with the, uh, the structural engineer on this, our storm, our building where the voting precinct's going. Uh, it's gonna be, and pretty easy to, to put a basement in that for a storm, for a storm, uh, shelter, not so much a storm shelter, but for storage too, but we can build it, uh, we'll, we'll come up with some figures, hopefully next week on it, and, uh, it'd be a real good structure, be centrally located, uh, for people, uh, so that would be a, a real addition to that, and you've always heard, you know, building a house even, that's some of the cheapest space you can have, and the way that's set into the bank, and always going, you know, going, which that, uh, we're working on that, so we'll, we'll give you a report on that, uh, too. Uh, but, um, it, it would make a good, a good shelter, uh, plenty of parking, and like I said, it's kinda the central, center point of Trenton too, you know, so. But we'll, we'll, we'll keep you up on that. Um, as I mentioned a while ago, uh, we found out, you know, last month, or last couple weeks ago, we're not gonna be able to get, um, our asphalt, and actually get started on our pavement till June, and, um, we'll be, uh, we'll, we'll be ready to go on that. We've got quite a bit to do this year, uh, with our Lemigmine, and also, uh, we've got a lot more, said, we've got a couple of, of projects we've done, we've gotta pay, and so that, look for that. Another thing that I've worked on, uh, was today, I met with, I've finally, I've talked on the phone for the last six months of these people. But I don't worry, you, most of you, a lot of you may be fishermen, maybe, maybe you're not, but, you know, until about two thousand, or ninety-nine, we had, uh, Lookout Creek was a trout stream, it was a dedicated trout stream, and, which part of it is now, but, and also Rock Creek on the mountain, we had three streams here. Uh, and you still gotta buy a trout stamp to fish in them, and they'll still write you a ticket if you don't have it, but they don't stock it anymore. They haven't stocked it in a long time, so I've got that, uh, I think I've got that coming back, uh, it won't be till next year, but, um, they came down today, and I spent the better part of the morning with, uh, the DNR people from the Fish Hatcheries and all, and they, uh, they did, uh, actually check the temperature of the water, and made, uh, you know, surveys and GIS shots of actually what it would be putting in trout and all, so, you know, hopefully next year, you know, by this time, 'cause that, that's what, right now, that's the stocking season, it's trout season up in the, up in the Blue Ridge, and the LJ and all that, so that'll be something, just an added, uh, added, uh, event you can do, you know, with your family, or your kids, you know, to be able to go, you know, and actually fish, you know. I mean, and not just fish for rim and bass, but be able to fish on a trout stream, so. Um, I, I think it, I feel better about it today than I felt, out of all the calls I made. So that's, that's something maybe to look forward to. Uh, we, uh, the Squirrel Town Bridge up there, Squirrel Town Creek, uh, that, that's going, it's going, it's fixing to get started, I mean, it's rolling. Uh, they're, they'll be working on that in the next few weeks, on that, uh, runaround bridge up there, and, um, there'll be, uh, I've said this before, there'll be like a red light there to let, uh, X amount of cars through and back, you know, same, but that, that's happening, so, uh, you know, you need to think about if you go through there, uh, you know, regularly, go, go to work, uh, you need to be, uh, practicing another route, you know, because if you're gonna hurry, they're not gonna stop traffic, but it'll be slower. Uh, one thirty-six, I got an email, uh, last week, and they, Alex, I think you're, you're, uh, you're actually part of that, I did give him your name, 'cause Center City, uh, that right there is, uh, is a project, I mean, there, it's not, it's, it's projected for year after next, actually the beginning of it. So, uh, but that'll go by quick, time goes by fast, but that's gonna be a major, major project, as we know, in Day County, uh, and Trenton, especially for, you know, for traffic, you know, so. Uh, but it's, um, it's something that they're, they're getting to fine-tuning on it, and we'll keep you up on that, 'cause that'll be a big deal, a big deal for a lot, especially people living on Lookout, you know. Uh, it's pretty much all I've got, I mean, as far as, uh, anything really critical. Uh, y'all got anything else you wanna add?
I'll finish my health report now. That, I did have a recurrence, uh, tumors are back on my liver, but I'm back on chemo, so as Doctor Pullen told me, keep fighting, so I'll keep fighting, and.
Yep.
And appreciate all the prayers that I could get.
Okay, all right. You sure got a lot of that.
Oh, yeah.
Lot of friends. Okay, all right. All right, let's move down to our appearances. Uh, we have an in-person presentation by Miss Laura Beth Cunningham, 4-H Extension Agent, and Laura Beth?
Well, I've been here since January, and a lot's always going on in our office. Um, April is when the 4-H Foundation does their big four dollars for 4-H drive. Uh, they do give eighty percent back to our county, um, but I find that it's a really big opportunity to show what all of our kids are doing. Um, so I have a middle school picture up there, um, DPA kids, shotgun team, people who went to the Capitals, so irregardless of whether we get money for it or not, I really like having our kids up there, and everybody getting to see them and comment on them, so I like that, I like that day. It's always April fourth. Um, our homeschoolers meeting was this last week, and I've realized that I've been here long enough now that I can actually recycle lessons, because I have new kids. Um, and one of my favorite things to do is an archaeology lesson, um, and the kids excavate a cookie, and then they get to eat it, so everybody likes to eat cookies. Um, but all the kids really enjoy those. Um, the month before that, we, every other month, we alternate with a Scrambled States of Agriculture lesson, and we talked about Vermont, and we, uh, tasted some Vermont maple syrups, and that was always good, so they got to have pancakes and maple syrup, so. They always like when there's food involved. Our next meeting is gonna be May twenty-second. Um, our poultry judging team competed this last week, um, it's my same four kids, and we always go, and they represent well. Um, Braxton actually moved up into the senior division this year, which is hard, hard for me to believe. Um, but out of all the seniors, he placed seventh, so, I mean, he continues to do really well. Um, so as the, one of the younger seniors, I think, probably by the time he graduates, he's gonna be in that top three. Um, our juniors always do really good, too. We never have enough to have a team with them, but, but they still go, and they have a good time. Our shotgun team, um, went to qualifying this last Saturday, they're gonna be going to state on the eleventh. Um, out of the twenty-five kids who are on the shotgun team, only four didn't qualify, so that's a really high percentage. Um, almost all of our girls qualified this year, it's always hit or miss with them, um, 'cause some of them are so little, it's just hard for them to hold a gun, but I'm really proud of them. Um, we'll have three girls representing us at state, and our usual boys, but out of this competition, um, we had four of our kids shoot twenty-five out of twenty-five. Um, so the, the shotgun team is really coming a long way, and they are competitive now. Um, but we had one junior, um, Audrey's grandson, he hit twenty-five out of twenty-five, and then two in our senior division hit twenty-five out of twenty-five. Um, the senior team placed second, and the junior team also placed second, but they're, they're, they're an impressive team this year. Um, I'm gonna start advertising a lot of my summer stuff. Um, me and Miss Renee over at the high school, we're gonna do a joint FFA 4-H camp. Um, it'll be the first of its kind, and we have really high hopes for it. We've only got three spots left, it's, it's been very popular. Um, it's forty dollars, the lunch is included, the high school, um, lunchroom is gonna feed the kids lunch, so it should be a really good, comprehensive ag camp for that whole week. It's gonna be that first week of June. And then, this is the most, most of my programs up here, um, we're gonna keep hiking, it is gonna be my goal in life to get kids out from in front of TVs and video games, so we're, we're gonna go hike, we're gonna concentrate on all the trails that are on Mont Eagle Mountain this year. Um, so there's a lot of trails up there, but we're gonna do four trails up there, we're gonna go to the jump park, I'm never gonna do anything like that, but the kids really enjoy it. I am gonna do a forensics camps this year, um, I do have a background in forensics, so I was trying to pull in something new. Um, it's gonna be a really good camp, it's kinda geared towards older kids, but we're gonna have a GBI agent there, our coroner's gonna come, um, one of our sheriff's department detectives is gonna come and, and help teach that, so, I mean, if any of your kids are interested in forensics and science like that, this is definitely a camp to go to. Um, we're gonna go zip line in, and then we're gonna go to Little River Canyon, we're gonna teach a forestry camp, um, and then I'm gonna take kids to Raccoon Mountain, I remember doing that as a kid, and, and a lot of people have kinda forgotten about it, but it's still there, so we're gonna go to Raccoon Mountain, too. There are some outside camps that I have learned about in some of my trainings lately, um, that are really good opportunities. Um, a lot of these are either free, or they're very low cost, um, you have to drive to them, but these are like more national, um, opportunities, so they're always a really good, if you, if kids are interested, they can scan the QR code, um, but there's a lot of good stuff that's going on, you know, between thirty minutes and an hour away from here as well. Mosquito season is coming up, it's already started. Um, I learned a lot about mosquitoes in one of my training things. Our mosquitoes are gonna get worse, um, they're never gonna get better, it doesn't exist if they stay cold enough to kill them off, um, so we're gonna have longer mosquito seasons. Um, there's some plants that you can plant, uh, but I would advise anybody that there's diseases that mosquitoes carry, and it's just gonna be, become more common, so everybody needs to be very aware of mosquitoes. And then our beekeepers, uh, the next meeting is gonna be on Monday, May twentieth, at seven, um, they haven't given us a topic, but last, I actually kinda hung around for it, and they have a lot of really, um, specialized people come in and talk at the beekeepers, so if anybody is actually interested in getting into that, it, they're actually a great resource. I was very impressed with the speaker that they had come in. And then Cattlemen's is gonna be Tuesday, May twentieth, it's gonna be in Walker County this next time. Um, the, there's gonna be someone from the Tucker Livestock Company come and talk about their products, and some of the things that they have going on there, and if you want the meal, um, you just reserve it the Friday before. And I think that's all I got, yep.
So, do you, um, also manage the Facebook page that you put out?
I do, yes.
Well, you do a good job, so, that's awesome.
I'm a little behind on it right now.
Well, it, it's a lot, so, I was like, I wonder if somebody's helping her.
Um, no, it's one I used to help, but she has been unable to do that, she's had complications with her personal Facebook, so that means she can't manage ours. Um, so yes, I've been trying really hard to keep up with it.
That's great, yeah.
I saw my first live cicada today, are, are we gonna be hit hard with them, or?
We should not be hit hard with them, we're gonna see them.
I mean, it's showing all around us, the, in other counties that.
Uh, the Midwest get hit hard, but, uh, we're gonna see them, you're always gonna see them.
Come on, focus. Yeah. Yeah, we got, our gatepost had the four on it, uh, this morning, where they said, you know, first time I'd seen them, so, but they were.
We're gonna see a lot of them, so that means we're gonna see a lot of bats, which isn't a bad thing, so.
Yeah.
I welcome the bats.
All right, thank you, good job, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Move down to, uh, well, we do have two online presentations also, that if you wanna go online on our website, you can, Ms. Mindy Hayworth, uh, she's our manager of the library, and also Ms. Sandy White, uh, she has a presentation with the Alliance for Day, so, uh, they're out there if you wanna, if you wanna look those up. Uh, move down to our, our financial presentation. Uh, Mr. Townsend, would you go where financial report?
As of April thirtieth, we had a balance in the general fund of one million, three hundred seventy-six thousand, five hundred eighty-nine dollars. In. In, on investment, 1.8 million, so it's a total availability of $3,176,589. Federal Asset Fund, US Treasury, a balance of zero. Share Special Fund, $2,586. Drug Abuse Education Fund, $8,809. Supplemental Juvenile Services Fund, $29,678. Victim Assistance Fund, $3,328. Jail Fund, $10,504. Federal Asset Fund, Department of Justice, zero. American Rescue Plan, $840,496. Accommodations, hotel motel tax, $302,100. Employees' Flexible Spending Account, $23,623. And the payroll account, $207,736. In the 2015 SPOLOST, we still have $86,431. And 2021 SPOLOST Projects Account, we have $116,640. And the Projects Account and the Proceeds Account, $2,966,377. The next page is the income statement as of March 31st. We, for March, brought in $690,430. We budgeted $677,892, so that was $12,538 in excess. And then also for year-to-date, with nine months ending, I think, that's $11,652,000, yeah, $1,579. And we had budgeted $11,651,066. So that's pretty good there. We only have excess funds of $1,512. The next page is the expenses. We have for the month of March, $1,126,292. Budgeted $1,127,021. So only under budget by $728. Year-to-date, expenses were $10,533,644. Budgeted $11,40,732. And so year-to-date, we're under budget $507,088. Budgeted tank so far should be at 75%. Budgeted revenues attained were at 79.36, and expenses were at 71.74%. In the local option sales tax, we did collect $255,399.77. And then for the special purpose local option sales tax, we collected $319,249.58. 2020, the next report is the 2021 SPOLOST Tracking Worksheet that you can see there with the detail following behind that. And then also, we're behind that report is the 2015 SPOLOST Tracking Worksheet. Which again, only thing remaining in there is some funds for the fire departments. Final report is from the Tax Commissioner, regarding the Tax Commissioner's Office. They, out of $6,338,000 budgeted, have collected $5,624,731. So that's short at this time, $713,268 with three months to go. So I'm sure they'll be fine and come in right at 100%, but currently it's at 88.75%. Also wanna go over, as part of the report, our schedule for the adoption of the annual budget. We have for that, May the 6th, which is coming up here in a few days. We'll have, begin daily budget hearings, beginning with each constitutional officer, director, department head, and the chairperson, county executive, and usually one other commissioner and CFO and our deputy here. So we'll be getting that, it usually runs for a couple of weeks. And hopefully we'll be through most of those. We've already proposed a rough, a very rough estimated budget for them, based off of historical data. Following that, we, if, May 24th, we hope to have the budget hearings and such to end as far as internal office meetings, and have a rough draft prepared. May 30th, or we possibly, if needed, could have a budget workshop or work session with the Board of Commissioners. We'll let you know about that, hopefully. We have not, I needed that in the last couple of years, so maybe we won't, but we'll let you know. And then Thursday, June the 6th, you'll see, let's see, the official presentment, that'll be next month's meeting, at the regular meeting. Hope to have some type of more formal budget prepared. It will not be the final budget, but it'll be a proposed budget for your consideration to lay on the table there for a period of time to review. We'll begin advertisement of a public hearing to be held on June the 13th. Here probably in this room, hopefully, depending on election cycles and such. Wednesday, June, okay, so yeah, that's June 13th. Then we'll also advertise, hopefully for a special call meeting for June the 20th, to consider proposal, or the proposed budget for FY '25. It's hard to believe we're talking about FY '25. And then hopefully that will be prepared and adopted, and then we'll be good to go for July the 1st. And we have the millage rate process, so Paula touched on that earlier, roughly, talking about the digest. They completed that April 30th, and so as she reported, the Board of Assessors will be meeting on May the 9th to consider for approval the county property digest. And following that, May 10th, they'll be mailing out the digest Board of Assessment notices to each property owner. And then that 45-day process you mentioned will take place. And then June, around June 25th, that will be completed. And then again, we ask if you have an appeal, make sure you get into that 45-day process. It's critical that you reach out to the Board of Assessors' office directly during that time, that 45-day process, to file any kind of appeal or ask any questions. Thursday, June 27th, then typically, if everything goes according to plan, Tax Commissioner Angie Galloway will schedule her third party, which is called Assurance, to pull data and produce the digest, which is what we consider consolidation sheets. And from there, we'll decide what we, how we take, what next steps to take. That's a lot of information, but I wanted to share that with you.
Any questions? If not, I entertain a motion to approve our financial statement as presented.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second? Call a vote. Mr. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. Hartline?
Yes.
Golf?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Okay, thank you. Alright. Robin, you got any legal issues you need to bring before the board?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll move on down to the, to the consent agenda, then we'll have a vote. We've got three items to go down. The reading of the minutes. The reading of the minutes of the last month's regular meeting, any special call may not be required since all commissioners have been furnished copies in advance. Managed for public record and available for viewing in our mission hours. The minutes are included in the consent agenda. At this time, I'd like for Mr. Townsend to go with consent agenda, and we will entertain a motion.
Okay.
Townsend?
We have the approval of the agenda as presented, approval of the previous meeting minutes, review of personnel status report, proclamation of respect for law, a joint proclamation between the county and the city of Trenton, and that is for the Trenton Dade Optimists Club, proclamation for Foster Care Month, month of May, proclamation recognizing for the county the National Day of Prayer, May the 2nd, proclamation for National Travel and Tourism Week, May, in May 2024, and then proclamation for Armed Forces Day, Saturday, May 18th, in Dade County. Under SPOLOST, we have the TASER X26P, which, there are four tasers, and that was a total, and that's from Axon Enterprise Incorporated, as recommended by the Sheriff's Office. And that includes a four-year additional warranty for a total of five years, for a total cost of $8,169.24. For Station 1, Dade County Fire Department Arctic Compressor Cascade System, the total cost was $60,413.97. And so the county, if we, oh, by the way, this is with 10, eight fire safety out of Bradenton, Florida. And we've looked at this, if we do the compressor, which was the top line, and then it had a low oil level switch component and an add-high temp switch. And then the installation and the freight were about the same amount, if we just included one of those. That total is $30,585. Is that good? Alright. And then the other is the Arctic Air Compressor Cascade System, similar with all the other instruments and gauges and clamps. For Station 4, Dade County Fire Department, and that's a total cost of $51,886.55. The Historic Courthouse Restoration Project Monthly Report, and I believe that's it.
Okay.
Yep.
Any questions? Okay, no, I'll entertain a motion to approve a consent agenda as presented to us by Mr. Townsend. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Go. Okay, thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion and second, I'll call a vote. Mr. Lowry?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Hartline?
Yes.
Mr. Golf?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Okay, thank you. Alright, we had two, three, we got three ordinances here that we need to vote on separately, left over from our consent agenda, so I'll go ahead and we'll start with ordinance 04-04-16. This is meaning ABC ordinance for golf course licenses.
Mr. Chairman, there was an error. It's 04-04-24. I made that error, so it's correct.
Okay. That's on the first one. Okay. Alright, okay. Okay, alright. Anyway, this is the first one, the ordinance 04-04-24, meaning ABC ordinance for the golf course license. Do I hear a motion to approve this?
I make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I'll call a vote. Mr. Lowry?
No.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Hartline?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Golf?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, move down to number 10, which is ordinance 04-05-024, meaning the alcohol beverage control ordinance be amended to remove certain local ordinance regulations on class two license prohibiting persons from bringing upon the premises and consuming on-site wine beverages is not purchased from the licensee. Okay, and on number nine, this one, I did vote, I'm gonna vote yes on that one. Alright. Do I have a motion pertaining to ordinance 04-05-24?
I will make a motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Call a vote. Mr. Lowry?
No.
Okay, Mr. Hartline?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Golf?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Okay. And the Chair votes no on that one. Okay. It carries 3 to 2. Alright, move down to number 11. Ordinance 04-06-24, a mini ABC ordinance location and distance requirement for distilled spirits. Do I have a motion to approve this, to change that?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Alright. Call a motion and second. Okay, Mr. Lowry?
No.
Okay, Mr. Hartline?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Golf?
Yes.
And Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Okay, I'll vote no on that one too. Alright. Alright, it carries 3 to 2. Alright. Okay. Any new business? Do you want to bring them forward? Okay. Okay. No executive session? You got anything you wanna add?
No, no.
Okay. Entertainer motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Call a vote. Mr. Lowry?
Yes.
Hartline?
Yes.
Golf?
Yes.
Bradford?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank all of you for coming tonight.